Joining, uh, joint meeting for rules and open government committee can be the whole for Wednesday, April 22nd. Tony, would you like call rule?
Arinas?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Kemos?
Jones?
Here.
Lagardo?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Thank you. I will start with the review of the final agenda. April 28th. I'll ask if there are any changes to that agenda, beginning on pages of five and six, seven and eight, nine and 10, 11 and 12. Pages 13 and 14.
Mayor, this is Gloria Schmanek. On item 4.1, we need a sunshine waiver, a 10-day waiver for the posting of the memo.
Say 4.1 Gloria?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, as the maker of the motion, consider that. And then finally pages, page 15. All right.
Mayor, this is Rick. Right now, we have nothing for closed session, but that, as you know, can change between now and Friday.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I just want, we're anticipating a pretty long meeting, given what we've got on the agenda. So also wanted note that if there was any interest starting early.
4.1 or 3.3 or?
Well, I think, well, I think 3.1 is, you know, the, will be another pretty detailed update. Yes, 3.3 with the budget, I think, will be, obviously, it's the, we're talking about this fiscal year budget, it's not next year's budget, but still, I think there's going to be a lot to discuss there. And I think there's other items of substance as well. So just making sure you all kind of cut, cut that.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Dave, for 3.1, do you have, um, what's your estimate of the time it's going to take you for, to deliver your content versus all the questions? We had because.
I think it's the latter that drives the time.
Yeah, so I just want to get an idea of, uh, what you estimate your, uh, how much time you'll need.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, we've probably been averaging a good 45 minutes of content that we deliver. And I don't want to leave you with the impression that we've got that all thought out weeks in advance. It's, you know, we're, we're trying to provide you with as much up-to-date information as we can. And so we're typically nailing that down on Monday and even Tuesday morning. But, you know, and certainly we're reluctant to kind of deprive you of as much information as we can give you.
No, and I appreciate that. And we should also remind, you know, the council that we can all reach out to you, any of the council liaisons, your, your office is being proactive and reaching out to me, answering all my questions, you know, real time. So
Yes.
probably should encourage that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
I don't see that deterring anyone, but it's a good point, Vice Mayor.
So Sam, I'm hopefully optimistic.
We appreciate that. We need that. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one. So Dave, were you warning us about that as a prelude to suggesting we start early?
I guess I never got that far, but that's, uh, waiting for someone to pick up on that cue.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
That's very good at that. So what did you want to suggest up?
Well, I'm wondering if, so I know, Mayor, you don't mind eating on camera clearly, but I don't like eating on camera and I'd like to have a little bit of a lunchtime. So I'm wondering if we could do 11?
Sure.
We have some time for lunch, hopefully, before we go to 1:30.
Okay, is that acceptable, the committee?
I apologize for my tardiness. We're talking about the agenda for the 28th.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And not only do I have no public cards, but literally we have no attendees.
Wow.
Not even Blair?
There's one.
But it's the people who stream it on YouTube.
Yeah, that's, that's our Civic Center TV. I'm glad they're there.
So I
loneliest meeting I've ever conducted. Okay.
To accept the agenda for April 28th with a sunshine waiver on 4.1 and I guess a start time of 11?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Davis.
And Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so I know that we have 4.1, which is sexual assault item. That was not me. And I apologize. I can't put my image up because I've been having some issues this morning. And like many of you have noted that if you only put your image, it improves your connection. So I apologize about that. But so I was hoping that we could also get another update from the chief. If, if not directly from the chief, from, you know, from another staff member, I understand he must be equally busy. Just another status in terms of statistics relating to aggravated assaults, sexual assaults, domestic violence and child abuse. It kind of in the same, in the same format, he, he gave a update last time.
Okay, we make that part of 4.1.
That'd be great.
Okay, it's all right, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, then, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Tony, I hope that was acceptable. Good. Onto the draft agenda for Cinco de Mayo. We're starting with pages five and six. I encourage everyone to bring their best Mexican-themed background for Cinco de Mayo. Appears to be a fairly short meeting. So everyone can begin their festivities. Well, I know we are moving one item on to the fifth, aren't we, Dave, from last night? No, we're not. I'm trying to think. It's a wonderful.
It's on, you're talking about, uh, the digital inclusion wifi kind of.
Yeah, I think that was it. Dave, you're actually on mute.
Sorry, yes. And that shows up as item 3.4.
Oh, okay. So that's already in there. Okay. All right, great. Any changes to the agenda? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda for May 5th.
I want to note that this is the agenda. We're likely going to come back with the amendments to the eviction moratorium. That was the topic of council member Carrasco's memo a few weeks ago. And the council gave us some direction. So next week, we're coming back with the rent freeze on any increases in rent. And then following week would be an extension of the eviction moratorium. Some additional language. So it doesn't appear to be on, at least my draft of this agenda, but that's something I want to make sure we're working with housing on and we're all on the same page.
Okay, great.
By the way, I find out that the link for the Zoom meeting is not working for the public.
I just got that notice too.
And apparently the people are going to YouTube, but, um, but the Zoom, the Zoom link is not working.
I thought we were just weren't popular.
See, now, now you can't say that you're, um, you're not running a popular meeting.
Yeah, it says the meeting number provided in the agenda is not correct.
So Rick, do you have any advice for us at this point?
I think at this point, you know, I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can with technology. I think, I don't know if there's a call-in number that they can call in on the, in lieu of Zoom or instead of Zoom. But
They're trying to do, that's what they're trying to do, but the call-in number is not correct.
Oh.
Okay, so I, it was incorrect up until an hour ago. I fixed it. So I'm checking right now and it's launching for me. So I can
You read it out?
Um, yes. So the meeting ID is, um, hold on, I just lost it again. I know I texted it to somebody, so that's, that'll be quicker for me. The meeting ID is 788-988-479. Again, that's 788-988-479.
It is, uh, do you have the call-in number two, Tony?
Um, yeah, just give me a second. I can get. I can get to that. Okay, so the call-in number. All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the call-in number is 888-475-4499. And the ID is the same as before, 788-988-479.
Okay, we have
Four attendees, I think we're showing now.
Yeah, we do have a few attendees now, but obviously others.
Can you repeat those numbers once again? There might be a delay with folks who, who are
Right.
possibly chiming in.
It's 888-475-4499. Webinar ID is 788-988-479.
788?
988-479. And I just hit, I just tweeted it out.
Got it.
Thank you, Tony. All right, we have a few folks now.
That was one of those, when they updid the, redid all the security systems, we had to delete our original meeting. And so the original ID was showing up. I thought we fixed all of the different places that it's listed.
Okay, now people are coming. Mr. Beekman?
Hello, hi, made it. Thank you. Thank you for fixing the problem and talking it out on the, on the webinar. Thank you, or on the, on your meeting. I guess, are you going to, is this public comment for, for the first agenda?
It's actually for the second agenda, Blair, but if you'd like to speak on the first one, please do so.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on both agendas if possible. Um, there is going to be uh, many items that, that are listed. And, uh, you know, I can't, I was so busy trying to work this out. I'm, I'm, my thoughts are frustrated right now. I'll try to collect them and speak up open forum. This is an issue, there's issues about, uh, energy use. And I surprisingly learned some surprising facts about your energy agreements you just made with PG&E a week or two ago. I wanted to comment on them. I didn't at the time. I heard some really interesting news on the radio that East Bay Community Energy is going to be addressing the same free pass that you got from PG&E with nuclear power. Um, and they're, hopefully they'll learn important lessons. What, you know, we were all young and not knowing what to do in the early stages of COVID. You took the deal with PG&E for nuclear power. East Bay Community Energy has a chance to decline it and work towards better morals, as you were trying to do with broadband, it sounds like at this time, and what was a very interesting meeting last night. So I wanted to make that clear here that, uh, you know, there's, there's something obviously very large at play. And these are, these are people who socially plan with nuclear power. So that's why I, you know, it shows the predicament we're in and what we really need to address for our future. And there, there are a few other items on the agenda that I would like to talk about, and I'll save that for public forum. And, uh, so peace and sustainability to all of us, good sustainability practices, and talk again soon. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other members of the community who'd like to speak on either of the agendas? I'll ask first, is anyone on the committee interested in changing their vote based on the commentary they may have heard with regard to the first agenda? All right, hearing no one, then we are on a, on the second agenda. One Rodriguez, Sir Rodriguez, welcome. Just public comment on the agendas.
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you wave your hand?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Thanks.
Okay, great. I apologize. I had an inaccurate meeting number. Is, is, I'm waiting for item number three pertaining to construction workers. Is, is that coming up soon?
It will be. We'll call you. Why don't you raise your hand when that comes up?
Okay. Okay, sorry for the interruption. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank you. All right then. On the second agenda, I believe we have a motion. Is that right?
Yes.
Seconded if we didn't have a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I made, I made the motion.
Yeah, the Vice Mayor made the motion. Okay, thank you. On that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move forward then. Thank you. Um, item D is a revised city budget calendar. Hey Dave, what's different?
Thanks, Mayor. And I think Jim's on the line too. But so we've, we've pushed things out a bit. I think the prior, the primary thing and the most pivotal thing is that the manager's proposed budget will come out on May 8th rather than May 1st. So we've just given ourselves a little more space to do that. And then there's, there's a little bit of a ripple effect, but why don't I let Jim go over the details? So that you're clear on kind of what we're doing. Jim?
Sure, thanks, Dave. So yeah, like Dave said, the, the big ripple effect is, is the release of the budget on May, May 8th. So that kind of pushes a lot of things back there, trickles down all the way to the mayor's June budget message being released also a little bit later on June 8th, which would mean that budget adoption would be on June 16th with the appropriation actions on June 23rd. So that would round out the city council meeting. So in, in between there, we have recommended dates for the study sessions of May 14th and 15th, which would also be different. And those will likely be virtual or conducted on, online likely. And so we have the timeframe set in there from nine to five for both, both days, but we'll work on for our first manager's budget denim to set out a more detailed schedule for that. And then we have, we have a planning commission study session for the capital budget, which will be on May 20th. The initial public hearing on the budget will be on May 21st. It's also a little bit pushed, pushed back. And then the timelines for the council budget estimates are, again, in the same time span just shifted out. So the cost estimates due to the city manager's office would be on, I believe that's on May, uh, May 15th. And then so we would turn around and make sure they were back to the city council on May 22nd and due to the mayor's office on May 28th. So those are some of the key dates there.
Yeah, so generally, there's, there's a one-week shift. And then there's a consolidation of the budget study sessions into two days rather than what historically has been over four or five days. Just to try to make up some of that, that shift.
Okay. I think when some of the documents start coming out describing the kinds of cuts we're going to need to make, I suspect there's going to be a lot of public comment. And these meetings could get very long. I remember the many meetings back in, in 09 and 10. So we need to account for that somehow in our scheduling.
Yeah, I think in talking with Jim and Jennifer, you know, what, on the, the budget study sessions, rather than us kind of breaking them up into these, you know, a presentation for every CSA. And I think we're going to be more focused, but I think there's still going to be that opportunity for, for the community and the public to participate and for us to really hone in on, on where the impacts are and what are we, you know, what, 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 what the, what the council needs to make the right decision.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, any comments? All right, I don't see any members of the community raising their hand. So we'll entertain a vote. A motion?
Second.
On Councilor Davis's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Item E is the public record. Nice. Mr. Beekman?
Motion to note and file.
Second.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I looked over the agendas and, uh, as usual, I wanted to talk about surveillance issues and, uh, my public records, uh, they spoke to a lot of items. I wanted to comment on the, uh, the, the many people who've been writing lately to public record about, uh, the 5G issue. And when I was initially writing about this, you, you, yourselves were nice enough to, you know, put into the public record what you were doing with Verizon at this time in the past month or so. Very nice of you. That was good accountability. It was my understanding, I felt that those were more surveillance things that you were doing. And is surveillance, you know, kind of an auxiliary function to this 5G stuff that you may or may
And is surveillance, you know, kind of an auxiliary function to this 5G stuff that you may or may not be placing? Now, it was explained yesterday, you can't really place it any place yet and you're still thinking about it. And, you know, so it's my guess that there's, there's, you know, upgrades and surveillance upgrades that you're going to be placing into into, you know, around the city at this time. And I hope maybe that can maybe start to make something clear. You know, the other issue on the agenda, on the May fifth agenda talks about graffiti abatement that has to do with technology issues. You know, I wanted to say we're heading into, you know, moral decision making now about how to start to work within the COVID nineteen. And I hope we can try our best to continue our good practices, what we were doing before COVID nineteen. And that means good accountability and the back and forth in that sense and possibly sidestep the COVID questions altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on Councilmember Kansas's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item G one is a consent counter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any opposition to that consent motion? Hearing none, that item passes. There are no speakers from the public. Item two is, oh, I'm sorry, I may have misread. So the cancellation of city council committee meetings, et cetera, that's not on consent?
No, that's item G two, I believe.
That's a separate item. Okay. I'm sorry. It's a bit confusing on the, on the counter. All right, is there a motion on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There are no hands from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Item three is an item that I propose bringing to the council more than anything to help us start thinking about how we can get ready for the time when the lights are going to turn green. I I've really set for a few steps. I know there are many others undoubtedly that we'll need to consider. But the hope was first ensuring that internally we could do all we could to be ready. And by being ready, I mean, for example, clearing whatever backlogs we have on inspections or permits across all types of construction so that when the light turns green, you know, based on the the direction of our public health authorities, we'll have people ready to get back to work and able to do so quickly. So that is a part of the focus is what we can do internally. Obviously, an awful lot of this work has to be done collaboratively with regional, county, regional and state public health authorities. I will say there's, I think, good news today from the governor in his announcement at noon where he really did start to talk about specific thresholds around testing and contact tracing. I think that's very helpful. So hopefully that will provide guidance as well for our region. And I'm hoping that we will all be aligned on that so that we can move forward together rather than different parts of the state moving at different pace, which I think has created a lot of challenge, certainly here locally and in other parts of the state as well. And then, of course, also ensuring that we are communicating well, both to various stakeholders, that is labor and company heads and others about how we can move forward and ensuring also that we're communicating well with the, with the public. So that is the the general gist of what I'm proposing here. This is probably not terribly novel, given what we've all been talking about, I know publicly and privately. We have three members of the community who'd like to speak, so I'll ask them to speak now, actually a few more now. Alex Caraballo.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alex Coroballo. I'm an inside wiring one with IBW Local three, three, two. And just like most of the people that work in my field, I am ready to get back to work. But I'm only willing to do so if it's done in a way that keeps myself, my family and my community safe. Any push to resume construction must be looked at through a public health lens first and must include every worker and their families being provided employer paid health coverage. If ever there was a time for this requirement, it's now during this pandemic. You know, we have seen the county work incredibly hard at both the public health department to try and make sure that our entire community is taken care of. And I don't want to see incredibly hardworking working class folks be sent in and thrown away like trash and not thought of as anything more than just a cog in the machine. We deserve more. So thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Trum.
Thank you, Mayor. Eddie Trum, Director of Government Relations at the Silicon Valley Organization with the Region of the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I really want to thank Mayor LaCardo for your visionary leadership in providing a safe pathway to reopen the economy. I think you're absolutely right that we need to partner with other government agencies to ramp up testing and contact tracing to track, contain and isolate the virus. It's the right step to do to reopen the economy because we can't endure much more of eighteen months of near total shutdowns. I think we can all agree with that. One idea that I want to bring to your attention that may not have been covered in your memo is this idea of rapidly retraining workers who were displaced by the COVID nineteen economic crisis into growing and emerging industries as a result of this crisis. Basically, the value proposition is simple. There are some industries that are going to be shuttered, shuttered and never recovered during this crisis. Hotels, hospitality, airlines, and those workers still need jobs in order to continue working. But there will be new emerging industries such as IT support, cloud security services, or even telemedicine that will likely grow as those demand for services continue to grow. Mayor, you put together a business council of leaders that may be able to help us identify what those jobs may be. And by partnering and talking to those executives about what those jobs can be, the city can be in a position to be visionary and proactive in getting displaced workers into those high end demand jobs. And you can leverage agencies like Work to Future or Sanosy Works or other workforce development agencies in order to get this done at speed of our economic recovery. Just an idea I wanted to bring up to your attention. And thank, again, thank you for your time and for your leadership.
Thank you, Eddie. Jeffrey Buchanan, welcome.
Hi, I'm Ben Apple Working Partnerships USA. First, just want to say there were a lot of members of the public that wanted to participate in this meeting but not having the correct ID. It really stifled public comments. So hopefully we can do better on that going forward. Again and again, we've heard from the leaders of the EOC and the city manager's office that, you know, as we're working to protect lives, we also need to make sure that we're using our limited resources correctly, ensuring that we're not creating redundancies. I would really strongly urge the council to take this proposal with a grain of salt, particularly since what's being proposed is essentially roles that really the county and our public health officers need to be leading on and are leading on. There's already, my understanding, discussions on a lot of these things centered on how the public health orders are formed. It's not city policy that's going to make a decision. It's the county policy. And so in line with all the comments we've heard around other issues, the city should be using its resources for the things the city should be focused on. Regardless, any plan to bring construction back to work needs to center on protecting the health of these workers and the public, ensuring that these workers have adequate access to PPE, the proper protocols, health and safety training are implemented, that workers have paid family healthcare so that those who are out there putting themselves possibly at risk do have access to healthcare. And, you know, ensuring that we're putting worker safety first rather than a piecemeal approach where county says one thing, the city says another thing, and contractors and workers are stuck in the middle. Thanks so much.
Frank Bill. Welcome, Frank. I believe you're on mute. Okay, his hands.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I'm back now. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, sure, Frank.
Okay, I'm Frank Bill representing David Beany, the Executive Director of the Santa Clara and San Bernardino Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. The council represents over thirty thousand workers associated with twenty seven different craft trades. David was not able to participate today as he was called away to a virtual meeting with a number of county officials who are addressing the issues surrounding opening up safe construction in the nine Bay Area counties. The Building Trades Council supports a countywide policy to resume construction that is public health focused and puts worker safety before profits, not a piecemeal approach. One standard approved by our public health professionals for our county. We believe that construction work sites that do the following two items should be allowed to resume work. One, abide by a public health department approved COVID nineteen work site safety plan that includes, but is not limited to social distancing requirements, supplying appropriate medical grade PPE for workers, COVID nineteen prevention signage throughout the work site, daily pre-shift start temperature checks of workers, daily pre-shift safety and sanitation briefings, hand washing stations throughout work sites, cleaning and sanitation requirements of restrooms, offices and other work site locations. And two, very importantly, we believe that each worker should be provided employer paid family health coverage for all of their workers that are on the site. We want all of our workers, their families and our communities to be safe and secure, both in their health and their financial well-being. We pledge to work together with our county, city and state officials to make this happen. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Nicole Amory Hall.
Hi, yeah, I, my name's Nicole Hall. I'm a member of IBW Local three, three, two. I'm a second year apprentice and I want to say that I just agree with everything that's been said so far. Actually, right now, I'm currently eight months pregnant. And it concerns me that I might be required to go back to work, you know, before everything's, you know, safe and and all of the things that have been spoken about today are actually the things that concern me. I want to make sure that, you know, that we are being safe going forward and that we're, you know, checking people's temperatures and making sure that we have the proper PPE, making sure that there's hand washing stations. And the question for me too is that like the hand washing stations, number one, they're not even warm water. So how are we gonna make sure that people are able to safely sanitize? You know, and these are questions that we, you know, I think that we should be asking ourselves. How is this stuff really going to be sanitary, sanitary using porter potties for construction workers and stuff like that? So just some ideas going forward, everything that everybody else said I absolutely agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. The phone number ending six eight eight three.
Hello?
Hi. Welcome.
Oh, hi. Mayor, this is Josue Garcia. How are you? I hope you're doing well.
I was way I'm doing well.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for taking the time and appreciate your efforts on trying to put people to work, but I do want to echo the other speakers' comments regarding to safety of the worker. You know, that, that we must continue to protect the worker and their families as, just as much as the community. I, as you know, I represent, and I have been representing construction workers for many years. So but now it's even closer to me because many of my family members and friends are in construction and, and this is very dangerous. I, as I said, I want to echo other people's comments, but I want to highlight again that in order for people to walk up to work, city council must make sure to, to require companies to provide paid health, healthcare, because if the workers or their family gets sick, you know, they are going to be in more than the trouble that they already are in. Also, you know, companies must adhere to every requirement by electoral health, health, electoral officials in regards to COVID nineteen and of course, worker protection for retaliation. I have helped workers, yes, on regular labor violations and retaliation is big when it comes to companies trying to put pressure on the worker. We don't want to put any worker on harm of being infected because this, this could be a casualty. So please support our recommendations from the public and I hope you can and the city council move it to a, to a full city council committee.
Before you go, could I ask you, had you reviewed the COVID nineteen safety measures on construction site? Document that was put together by Robbie Hunter, the AFL-CIO and the Building
I did.
Council of California? Do you disagree with that?
No, I don't. I just, we just will need to enforce it.
Oh, good. Then we're all on the same page. I just, I seem to sense that there's some opposition to what the building trades have consistently been supporting. I just want to understand, are you supporting it? Are you, are you going against the building trade?
No, 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 I'm supporting it.
Oh, good. Then I think we're all on the same page. Thank you, Isway. Okay, the next caller is nine five one eight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. This is Diana Zamora Marroquín, the Political Director for the South Bay Labor Council. You know, as, as this pandemic continues to have devastating impacts on many of the families that we represent, the construction trade is obviously one of the ones that is at the forefront. While it is imperative to resume work on residential and commercial developments in Santa Clara County, this really needs to be done in a way that protects the health and the workers of health, I'm sorry, protects the health of the workers on those sites and also keeps the public's health at, at, at the forefront. You know, what, what we really need is a countywide policy, one uniform policy that is approved by our public healthcare professionals and not anything that is disjointed or siloed. Work sites that reopen must follow a public health department approved COVID nineteen work site safety plan, which would include things such as non-medical grade PPE for workers, social distancing requirements and hand washing, hand washing stations. Additionally, we feel that it's incredibly important that there be employer paid family healthcare coverage for all of these workers. As I'm sure you all know, much work has been done with the county to move towards opening constructions in my sites in a manner that holds public health in the highest regard. And now is not the time for any bureaucratic intrusions that will slow down any of that progress or put the health of our workers at risk. We have a stance that the mayor's memo raises some concerns for the construction industry. We understand that the city may be playing a role in executing the plans already in development with county public officials, but should not unilaterally do its own thing. Again, this goes back to the idea of having just one countywide uniform policy. And so today we're encouraging the city to work with the county to get construction workers back on the job while safeguarding their health and the public's health and not create any unnecessary obstacles. So thank you for your work on this issue.
Thank you. Pixel four, welcome. I believe you're still on mute, Pixel four.
Yeah, it muted itself. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, my name's Ryan Jones. I'm with the Local three ninety three, plumbers and pipe hitters. And after what Frank had said, speaking for Dave Beany, only thing I can say after that is I second that. You couldn't have said it any better. Things need to be done out there in the, in the workforce. I am one of the few that was lucky to be working up until very recently here. And there needs to be a lot more stringent rules on these job sites as far as safety and and checking people that are coming out to the dogs as far as their temperature and hand washing stations that we're gonna have soap real quick. I'm not even sure that it's disinfectant soap. And those measures definitely, definitely need to be addressed before we resume working. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll take more public comment until two forty five. Anyone can raise their hand by two forty five and then we'll, we'll want to move on. The phone number ending in four, three, four, nine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. This is Matthew Reed from Silicon Valley at home. We just wanted to share our appreciation for this effort. We face a housing crisis before this pandemic and we believe the affordability crisis is going to increase in the wake of the health and economic shock that we're going through right now. We believe it's critical that housing construction open up. We also believe that this needs to be done in a way that protects the health and safety of the frontline construction teams working in this essential area. While we appreciate that affordable housing construction While we appreciate that affordable housing construction has been able to continue during the emergency period, we believe housing needs to be at the center of the regional and local recovery and we need to open up all construction sites. Keeping safety in mind, we're involved in advocacy efforts at the county level around the region. This work of establishing clear guidelines for workforce and work site safety is of course the most important and the first step in this process. We'd like to commend the engagement with public health officials and the trade unions on sound safety standards. These aren't simple times and this hasn't been simple at a number of construction sites, but we believe that in an informed collaborative and deliberative process, as we understand is being proposed is a tremendous step in the right direction. Everybody needs to be safe and as we get a handle on this and learn to manage these challenges, everybody is going to need a place to call home that they can afford. Housing production is going to be a critical part of our recovery and I appreciate the time to share our comments.
Thank you. Justin Graham, welcome.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Justin Graham. I am a inside wireman apprentice, first year with the Local 332. I, I would like to second and agree with everything that has been said as far as personal protective equipment and sanitizing stations, proper signage. On, on the job sites, we as construction workers constantly see danger. But currently we are dealing with something that we can't see that affects more than just us on the site. And it does affect our families and loved ones, friends in a, in a much more personal way. So moving forward, working with the county and, and public health officials, we would greatly appreciate that the contractors and developers are held to the high standards for proper personal protective equipment, sanitizing stations and signage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I have three more members and then we'll close public comments. Galaxy S nine plus followed by three nine three fitter and then Juan Rodriguez. Welcome.
Hello, yes, Mayor Licardo.
Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name is Daniel Casanova. I'm a member of Local 393 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union. I, I'd like to agree with everybody and second what they're saying about setting one standard in the county. For example, the standard in Gilroy should match the standard at Palo Alto and so forth. And the county public health professionals, from what I've been reading, hearing are setting these ground rules. The job sites prior to everybody be sent home, we're practicing these measures with masks and, and sanitation. Going back to the comment of the pregnant member about the hand sanitation, excuse me, the hand wash stations not being warm water or at least warm water. I don't know if we could address that on the job sites. But I appreciate everything that the city is doing, the county is doing, everybody with your council who's stepping up. And hopefully sooner than later, we could get back to work and like Trump said, make America great again. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Mr. Three nine, miss or Mr. Three nine three fitter? Hi, I think you're, you're still on mute. The mute indication still seems to be on. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo.
Welcome.
I just wanted to go on record saying that despite wanting to work, I still think it's slightly too early to be going back without widespread testing and antibody testing. We are probably going to see this spike again if we go this route. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Juan Rodriguez.
Hello, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. So I just wanted, I'm a member of three nine three. I'm standing in agreement with all my sisters and brothers in Local three nine three. I've already been exposed before the shutdown. Luckily, I didn't develop any symptoms. Our job site was shut down at the beginning of the shelter in place. So I just want to stand with all my brothers and sisters in three nine three to please provide Santa Clara County wide safety before we step back on these jobs. And, you know, I, I already take an asthma inhaler. I always, I already take a steroid to, to keep my lungs breathing. And it's, it's critical, just like, you know, the lady was saying that she's eight months pregnant. It's critical that these sites be safe for the people that are on these jobs. Have a great day and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and thanks for your comment. I appreciate all the members of the community came forward to speak. Returning to the committee, I appreciate the very serious concerns that many have about making sure if they're returning to work, they're doing so safely. And that's really why I embraced building trades, industry specific COVID-19 construction field guidelines. Actually, the document that's attached isn't the full document that needs, should have been attached. And I'm sorry, there may have been a mistake on our side. But there's a much fuller document that is, was put together by a coalition of building trades councils in Northern California, along with associated general contractors. And it appeared to be, reflects sort of the, the, the best standard that labor and business had come together to try to establish. And certainly if there are other requirements, the county or others want to impose, that's something we would certainly incorporate. But I think the important thing, the message in all this is that we've got to get ready. That is, there needs to be a city process of some kind that ensures that either we're requiring that folks file plans that comply with those guidelines or, or that there's a a list of, of contractors that have agreed to sign up or whatever it might be. So that we know that whoever's going back to work is doing so safely. And so the, the goal of this memo, I think contrary to, I think the suggestion of some, which was to somehow or another controvert the, the health authorities, which it's not, I think if you look at the memo carefully, you'll see in several occasions it resolve, requires and just involves discussions with the county. And then the second recommendation is as the county or the public health authority identifies, clearly there's reference to a need to work with the county. The point is that we need to be ready to go when the light turns green. And the last thing I want to see is at some point, the state or the various public health officials say that some particular industry can move forward and the obstacle would be the city. I don't want that to be the case. Okay, Councilmember Camus.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was, I was going to echo your, your thoughts there because to me, the memo didn't, didn't look to supersede the county's authority in any way. I just, it was trying to get the city ready for action, if you will, and, and the suggestions for the building and planning department, I think were clear and, and needed. One of the things that I continue to be proud of is the innovation that's being done in our building and planning department, especially the video, video inspections. And I think that we need to institute that as a permanent thing and not just for the COVID-19 process. I think it could speed up and speed up the inspections, make them more efficient and have a, you know, visual record of some of these projects that, that, that is, that is better than the written records. So, so I applaud you for, for this memo, fully supportive of it. I do have a couple of questions. You know, I know the county is, is, is the decision maker. And I've sent letters to the county asking about ways to put construction jobs and/or other jobs back to work. You know, and I've also written op-eds now. How do we get, how do we get involved in the decision-making process? I know we're not the decision makers, but there are ways that we can put construction workers back to work sooner rather than later that, and safely and safely. And so I'm looking at all kinds of things, all kinds of jobs that could go back to work. Our gardeners, we, we have our, I think even home cleaning services can be done safely with the, with a proper protection and procedural, procedures. And, and some of these jobs are jobs that are, you know, that, that are, that are in communities that are most affected. And so how do we get involved in the process, Mayor, more than writing a letter?
Good question. Dave, you want to take that one?
Yeah, well, um, you know, and I think, so I think a couple of things. One, we are providing input through the EOC to EOC. And so we, we've got that process going. I do think that the question you're asking though, is something that we've also contemplated in terms of, you know, the, the reopening of the economy and reopening of businesses and all. It seems to, to me, and I think others, that it, this needs to be more of a, a public process and there needs to be opportunity for input to all of that. And so I, I think we will be helping to kind of create that forum with you all. You know, I think it's, I guess it's my hope, you know, certainly we all understand that, that the, the shelter in place was, was swift and fast and, and there were good reasons for that. It, it seems to me like the reopening, I, I think, I think there is time for thought to go into that. And so that we can, we can do it in a way that's still supportive of, you know, the, the, the health objectives, but also gets people back to work. So, you know, we'll be partnering and working with the county on that. And I, I do think it's, it's going to be important that we provide that opportunity for, for our council, our mayor to, to provide that input representing our city into that process. So don't have a, you know, all those issues worked out, but I do think that we will be, we will be trying to make sure that those opportunities do exist.
But, but I'd appreciate that. I'd love to see some of the work on the, the high rises in San Jose restart. I think those are, those could easily be put back to work. There's, there's so many job, you know, golf courses. I mean, those could restart. I have so many ideas that I'd like to, to work on, on this. And for me, there's no amount of federal $1,000 checks that's gonna, that's gonna keep people in their homes much longer. And it's, it's, if we don't look at ways to jumpstart this economy, then we're gonna, we're gonna be, our problems are gonna compound. They're not gonna get easier to solve. We're gonna have a lot of people losing their homes if we don't get work restarted and that urgency needs to be stated. We absolutely need to do things safely and, and the county should be giving us ways to conduct these jobs safely. I think, I think that's what we need to look for them to do. How can we do this job safely? In any case, I, I totally support this memo. I just, I'm looking for more ways to have some influence over the discussion. So I'll, I'll make a motion, but I'd, I'd love to have ideas on ways to be more influential on how to get people back to work sooner rather than later and safely.
And if, if I could just add, councilmember, certainly I think the way the mayor has laid this out, it, it provides that opportunity for us to bring these issues to the council, do some work, bring these issues to the council, get the council's input on these items and to be able to do that in a public way that, that provides that input.
Again, I applaud the mayor. I think this is absolutely a necessary step to get our own, our own city ready for action, but we also need to, to weigh in on what the county is doing and to, to give them advice to at least be there as advisors, you know, to, to make, push this conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to echo comments that councilmember Camus, you've just expressed, I appreciate your leadership, Mayor. You, we've led, you've led us, our city through so many of the issues that COVID-19 is, is placing on us. And so I think this is just another area that we need to make sure that we look forward to. I, I know that it's hard to look ahead when we're still in the middle of it, right? I mean, last night we were just talking about some, what we see as some basic support to our community with food, housing, education. I mean, you know, just a, a number of things because this is what we do. This is what we do for our community. And so what I, what I heard tonight, I mean today, is that, you know, that I think there was a lot of folks who were just concerned about safety. And I think you, you included a lot of the key safety standards that are being developed. I think you referred to your plan for the safe construction during the COVID-19 health crisis. I see the, a plan, I think that's the plan that was attached.
Yeah, not my plan. That was California.
No, no, I know. Yeah, yes. Yes, I, I realized. No, that's a plan that, that you took from folks who were, who were already laying out what they would like to see once work is back up again. So, so I know that, that you're, you're acknowledging the expertise of the folks in the construction world. I don't think, I think it's in line with what would people are saying. I think what I heard is, is some fear. Fear of going out there and, and, and working in an environment that we, you know, other than maybe essential service workers, you know, first responders, nurses and doctors, they're all used to, you know, and firemen for sure, they're used to running towards the fire and not away. And, but not all of us are meant to, to kind of do that, right? And so I think, you know, we, we just play this really important part in, in building these partnerships with other government agencies as you have. And I know from the very beginning, you've been in line with the county. And so I've got, I'm not sure where those comments are coming from. And I did hear you say last night that there was maybe a second or third contagion cycle. We, or we, you know, we don't know. We
We don't know. Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can say maybe, right? But we, we don't know. We've never faced this before. So I understand the importance of coordinating with, with public health, with Dr. Cody. I think that's what I heard folks say is that they wanted to have us really coordinate well. And, and if they, you know, didn't know before, we are coordinating with them. But, but I also looked at this plan for construction and in it, it says there's a portion of it that has COVID-19 exposure plan. And it says immediate removal of infected individual from the job site with directions to seek medical care. You know, so it has a process in terms of when, when workers are exposed. The, the question there and something that I heard from speakers is that it doesn't really say like, who's gonna cover this medical plan, right? If we're sending folks out, we want to make sure that even, even after the shelter in place order is lifted or while it's, it's in place, we want to make sure that there's that health insurance. So because first of all, we want them to go to the doctors. And two, we want to make sure that that health visit doesn't create an additional household burden on them. And, and this is similar to what we discussed previous for our essential service workers at markets and gas stations, things of that sort. You know, once they step out of their home, they're leaving possibly their children behind or other responsibilities. And so we want to create that burden for them. And I was really proud of our city to, to provide paid leave for those workers. I think for, for this area, what I've heard was that they wanted maybe a real comprehensive approach. I, I heard a lot of like piecemealing statements, but I think the, the, from what I, you know, and people can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard is that they really wanted to have this comprehensive approach, this very coordinated approach. And so, and I, you know, I agree with, with much of what was said from, from our speakers. I would like to add and hopefully councilmember Camus, you would be open to a friendly amendment. Because I think it's important for us to have a backup plan, a health insurance, employer paid, hopefully, health care coverage for those workers who are out there. Like I said, the construction plan says that they should seek medical care, but it doesn't say how, who's gonna cover that, right? And we don't want to create a burden for, for our families. I also heard, you know, that there might be some pressure for workers to get back into the field. And, and it's important to have really strong whistleblower protections. Now, the construction plan doesn't have that in, in place, but I think Senator Elizabeth Warren and Ro Khanna, last week, they introduced an essential workers bill of rights. And in those, they have And in those, they have a whistleblower protection as well as family healthcare. And so I think, you know, those elements are really important. And I think they fall in line with this plan that is developed locally. So I'd like to add employer paid family healthcare coverage. I'd like to add a strong whistleblower protection. It's important for for workers to tell us and to share any lack of compliance to really prevent any retaliation from work on any worker, you know, that reports some of these health and safety violations. And just to to have some general adherence to the to the plan and their components. So so and lastly, I think it's important as companies come in online that we give priority to some of the companies that have shown a really good history of safety compliance. You know, there's always bad actors in any field and they'll poison the well for others, so to speak. So I'd like to see companies who are allowed to resume work and prior to to resuming that work, that they fix any local or state safety and that we prioritize maybe those who haven't had any. So those are my amendments, my suggestions, and I hope that you would accept these amendments. I think they fall in line with what we want for our community, what's important for our community and to protect our community. Because in essence, they're going to be the first round of people who are going to go out there, you know, outside of just essential service workers. But they're going to be the first round of people who who go out there and work. And so I hope that you you'll be able to accept this. And hopefully, our city manager is going to look into how these items can be implemented by our city, by our partners in a general.
Thank you.
Well, so I do have, I think we've already passed sick leave requirements for for the city of San Jose. In fact, it was a couple of weeks ago, if I don't recall correctly. And the state already has sick leave requirements. And then the federal government also has sick leave requirements. So I don't want to create more, if they already exist, I don't, I don't care if we include it in language, it's not a problem. I what I'm what I'm objecting to is putting every business under a microscope before allowing them to open up. But I think if you put priorities, then you open things up to politics. I'd rather see a job classification such as construction. So it's so it's non discriminatory. And I don't know if, I don't know if Rick has any comment on the last two thoughts of mine as far as sick leave and priority.
And just to be clear, I apologize for the interruption, Rick, but I didn't say sick leave. I made the, I cited the example of of providing sick leave for our essential service workers. And I said, in the same spirit, that we should provide paid paid family healthcare coverage, not paid sick leave. I understand that we've already taken care of the paid sick leave. But so say they they get the paid sick leave. Now what, who who covers the doctor's bill is where I'm going with this. And I think it should be the employer who's asking that worker to go out there and work.
And I think to some extent, there's some policy issues there, but but there's also a legal issue. And it's something we have to look into. The legal issue is many of these workers, if not most, are unionized workers. They have collective bargaining agreements. You know, we can be preempted by the National Labor Relations Act to the extent we get into the bargaining process. I assume that if the collective bargaining agreements deals with wages, health benefits and other benefits. So there are issues there we'd have to look at. You know, whether it's paid individually or paid family leave. You know, that's a, what's what kind of scope you have of coverage. But the the one legal issue that stands out in my mind is, to the extent you have unionized workers, the collective bargaining agreements covered, the health, health benefits are typically part of that agreement. And we'd be preempted from 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 looking at, we can look at the issue clearly, but I just want to raise it.
So so I'm not inclined to do either of the proposals that were stated because I think it opens up, it actually creates a whole lot more work and a lot more questions. I think the purpose of the 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 memo was to streamline things to make it go faster. And I'm, and it, this sounds like it created, it creates a lot more bureaucracy and work. And it's not in the spirit keeping of the mayor's memo. So I will not accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I would like to hear, if you will, Mayor, if you would give us your feedback. I know that Johnny's saying, I'm, Councilmember Camus is declining my amendments. But I think in in spirit of making sure that we protect our workers, I'm not trying to make this more bureaucratic, but I think we need to take a look at who we're prioritizing. And if we're prioritizing the construction work, then let's take a look at how we protect those workers. So specifically, we're talking about that. But but I'd love to hear your feedback, Mayor.
Sure, I heard a lot of concerns expressed, for example, from members of 393. I assume they've negotiated health insurance benefits for their members. And all the building trades officials I've been talking to have been, you know, in the conversations we've been having, they've never mentioned this because they have those benefits set. We've been talking about how we can get them back to work quickly. So, you know, in the city, to my knowledge, we haven't had a private sector mandate for insurance before. And at a time when our entire city staff has been remobilized to trying to provide food for two, more than 2 million meals a week and trying to get homeless off the street. I don't know how it is, we suddenly create what will be a very complex health insurance mandate because we know health insurance and all things health related are complex. How we do that at the speed that we need to move to be able to get people back to work. At the same time, our city staff has been decimated by all the demands of the emergency operations. I just don't know how that works.
Right, right. And I think for for the issue on around the union, it could be non-union companies is not necessarily or those who use non-union labor. I think, you know, the the intent here is to make sure that the first group of folks who are going out there, and you know, these could be, you know, college kids who who this is their first job and, you know, they just want to get some money in their pocket. They're not necessarily part of a union. This is not a long term option for them. But this is something that you know that all of our community is going to, they're they're going to hurt really badly. And they're going to take any jobs that are in front of them. And so I think it's up to us to figure out how to best protect them. And I get that there's so many competing issues. Definitely, I just would love to to explore the the conversation further.
I guess the question that raises is raising my head right away, Councilmember Arenas, is, you know, the county is an expert in healthcare and in health mandates. And we have been very deferential to their authority here in the past. They've waited in in a big way two decades ago and the provision of health insurance for children doing so in dramatic fashion. And right now, we've got a lot of frontline workers in retail grocery stores, for example, who may or may not be covered in health insurance. I guess the question is, why wouldn't the county be taking this on? And most importantly, what about all those workers that are out there now? And why are we only doing this with regard to workers who aren't working that we want to get back to work? It seems to me those are much larger questions and the county is certainly capable weighing in on them and look forward to that discussion.
That is a great point. I agree with you completely, and I think they should be. They should answer that question, and I think we should pose that question to them. So absolutely, I'm absolutely open to that. I think that we need to discuss it. If we don't put it on the table, then we can't ask them to be accountable to to our essential service workers that are not covered and to these future construction workers that are possibly non-union.
Okay, any other comments?
All right, so from what I understand, Councilmember Camus, you are rejecting all of my amendments, it sounds like.
Yes, I just think it adds a layer of bureaucracy that that I don't think we're ready to handle right now as the mayor described. I think it'd be better taken up under the Santa Clara County as a question because it it's a much broader scope than than I think that that maybe even you have thought of. It's much broader, it's a much broader issue than 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 you think it is. It's going to take a lot more time to go through those issues. So I would, no, respectfully, I apologize, but Sylvia, I cannot take that.
Well, Johnny, thank you for your consideration, but please don't undermine what I've thought ahead of. I just would like a simple no or yes, thanks.
Okay, I believe you responded no earlier. Any other comments? All right, then, on Councilmember Camus's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay, one opposed. That passes by four to one vote. Okay, we'll move forward then to open forum. Ms. Speakman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the meeting today. With much surveillance and technology items in recent agendas, I hope we could know how to continue our good community practices, dialogue and arguments that were taking place before COVID-19 SARS II. My own timetable suggests that by the summer of 2021, we can have a better handle on this pandemic. This next 14 months can be a long time in school age and day to day work years, but not so much in city planning years. As we all will be entering new decision making by the summertime, I hope we can continue dialogue of technology based on responsible minimalist use practices. It can invite this process to be more understandable and less intimidating for all parts of the community. And interestingly, a good way in how to define the terms proactive, innovative and humanistic as well. I wanted to thank with the remaining time, David Sykes and Kip Harkness for their for their, how they speak on items 3.1 each week. I think it's been very informative and it's very organized and it gives a very set pattern in what I can expect. And it's helped me a lot. And I'm pretty much, I'm prepared what what to expect. And I think that just it keeps me from being frustrated and angry. And I just thank you, I hope you can continue that. And I can, I see David Sykes is doing some work on, he has his own website now. He has a little bit of a page, and so thank you for that and keep up the good work in that department. Good luck to how East Bay Community Energy in the next week, they're going to be talking about they don't necessarily need nuclear power, which means, you know, they've learned lessons from San Jose because we were a bit scared a few weeks ago, now we're not as much. And hopefully, community power can learn that lesson. And finally, I wanted to thank Sylvia Arenas, you know, to quickly add that with the summertime, there should be time for jobs, but by next winter, we're going to have to worry about the COVID again. Maybe that can be a time to create work furlough programs. And, you know, what is it called? Time off program.
Mayor.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Speakman. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Stay healthy.